All right, it is one o'clock. We will resume our business meeting of the Click Tech County Board of Commissioners called to order. Let the record show that. Two of three commissioners are present. Commissioner Anderson is in another meeting, but maybe Johnny is sure. With that, the next item on our agenda is the legislative update with Zach Kennedy. But I don't know if he's on, but there he is. Okay.
I I am here. How are you doing?
We're living the dream, sir. How about you?
I'm wondering whose dream you're living.
I'm living the dream one nightmare at a time, sir.
There you go. Doing all right. You know, got a little bit of a break in the weather. It's it's interesting. You know, a lot of stuff politically going on, a lot of, a lot of things going on behind the scenes. I don't know a lot of it's worth mentioning to you guys at the moment. It doesn't really affect us. But I can tell you from the update side what we're starting to see. People are having a heck of a time again this year, getting meetings, getting appointments with legislators. It doesn't really seem to matter whether it's the the Rs or the Ds or the House or the Senate. Leadership, the just freshman legislator, it it really doesn't seem to matter. There's a lot of infighting that we're seeing right now, and I think that can kind of be evidence of what you guys saw at the last steering committee meeting where basically WASAC went to not a priority list, you know, I mean, and then that's, I know you guys have talked about that quite a bit, you know, I mean, it's it doesn't mean that they're not advocating for or against different legislation or supporting things or not or whatever. But it certainly kind of reflects the attitude that we're seeing right now on the Hill. A lot of people are really just I kind of unhappy with the state of things. It doesn't feel like there's a lot of movement. The movement that we have seen has been at best watered down. And even just in both caucuses, especially in the House, there's a lot of infighting right now. So I I can definitely understand why, you know, the WASAC membership went to kind of the way they went at that meeting. And I can understand the frustration. Believe me, the legislators are feeling it as well. The Republican caucus is kind of all over the place in the House and then in the Democratic caucus in the House is really starting to second guess and and question things. They're probably going to go through a reorganization here. No idea what that will look like. And the Rs are looking at the same kind of thing. So what I'm saying is definitely expect confusion for communication and in general, just good government.
You're always such a joy.
You know, I try not to to sit to you guys, really, um.
So what you're telling us is more of the same in the in the state capital this year?
I I would expect to some extent, yes, I I would expect a little bit more of the same. It does seem like though that people are getting tired of it. You know, they they want to see some stuff happen. I think that we've seen a lot of the policy that's been passed in the last two, three, four years. Kind of coming back around right now, and a lot of stuff didn't work out. You know, we've got sheriffs coming out and flat out saying, look, if you commit a crime, we're gonna chase you, period. Thurston County Sheriff came out and then did a whole, I don't know, I I saw it on all the news or something, but he did it on Twitter or Facebook or I don't know, one of the socials. And just flat out said, you run, we're gonna chase you. We can't afford not to because their crime rate's going through the roof. So I I mean, I think we're starting to see some of the actual real world implications and effects of some of the the policy that's been passed, whether it be, you know, with law enforcement, with funding, with criminal justice, I mean, name it, you know.
That brings up my question, and we'll use it with police chases because you brought it up. I mean, the number of police chases and people fleeing law enforcement have skyrocketed since the new policy decisions. Are the people that put those policy decisions in place realizing that they might have screwed up and they're coming to their senses now and are thinking all we're doing is teaching bad behavior? Or are we not that far along yet?
I think it's a stretch to to think that. You know, you can see the forest through the trees on that side right now. Obviously, the idea is, hey, if we don't chase these people, they're not going to cause collisions. That was the underlying kind of reason behind, okay, no more police chases. Well, I don't think they've seen any reduction in vehicle to pedestrian or vehicle to vehicle collisions based on these. All you're seeing is like you outlined is hey, we're we're seeing more crime. Look, I can do something bad. The cops won't chase me. Take my license plates off. They have no idea who I am. Steal a car. They have no idea who I am. So maybe there's a little bit, but I I don't think that it's widespread yet in terms, because if it were widespread, we'd we'd be seeing calls for immediate change, and I have not seen that.
Okay. Well, I held out hope. I'd be the only one that holds out hope that people will come to their senses, but.
Well, I mean, and in time, I think they will. I I really do think that, you know, that in some point here, it's one of those where it's got to happen. I mean, you you have to step back and go, wow. This is not what it it should be. I mean, this is not working how we thought it would. That said, I mean, we could evidence California and they just keep going harder, faster, stronger in the direction that makes you scratch your head and go, I don't know what's going on over there, right?
Right.
So, you know, I mean, there's, there's a kind of wait and see. But I think more importantly for you guys, as we're looking at this, with Clickit Tech County specifically, do you guys have legislative priorities that you want to focus on? We've got here at the end of November, early December, really, Committee Days coming up for the House and the the Senate. We can kind of float some ideas there, you know, we'll be there one way or the other, kind of observing, but we can certainly float some ideas in committee or with the legislators. They are taking meetings. What do you, what are you guys thinking of outside of, you know, kind of WASAC positions? What what's important to you guys this year?
Um, to tell you the truth, we have not even sat down and discussed the next year's legislative session other than WASAC's position.
Okay.
And nor have we heard, which I guess would be a question for you, is what are you hearing on the Hill of what they're going to be pushing this year? Are they gonna be, is it going to be an election year where everybody plays safe? And doesn't anger the base? Or are they going to be pushing gun registration and climate change and everything like they would on a non-election year?
I think it's going to be a little bit of both. They're going to hit on their, you know, those core ideas, but I don't think it's going to be quite as hard line, and they're going to lose the middle ground on that, right? The the middle of the road, both Rs and Ds are gonna they're gonna vote softer on it, you know, and so I don't think they'll have the votes in either house to really go hard line anything. You know, with respect to what we hear coming, I I have two comments to that. I've kind of been following legislators around a little bit here and just listen. Everybody kind of has their own own little issues. It's all the same story that we've we've been singing. With respect to what's actually going to happen, I would say, if you guys don't have anything that's outstanding, you go, you know, hey, the wheels are falling off our buses or, you know, we need a new road grader, whatever. Let's hold off until we get to Committee Days and then let's schedule another call after Committee Days. And we can kind of go over, say, here, this is what we see coming. You know, here's the possible negative impacts of things. Here's, here's what could be helpful and kind of the conversation with respect to what the legislators actually want to do this year. That's probably a good way to handle that one. You know, and and outside of that, what I would recommend you guys do, and I I can do it for you if you want, and I can help schedule it, but some of the legislators and especially yours in in your district are very interested in meeting with you guys. I mean, they've expressed it. I'm not going to speak for them. But there's been a lot of interest in actually meeting with the county commissioners here in the rural counties. So it might not be a bad idea to get in touch with your three legislators and see if they might want to come meet you and and sit down and and talk about whatever that might be that you guys need to talk about, see if they need any support on anything.
But that that's very encouraging. Yeah, I I will, I think we should reach out and see if they're looking at some kind of a formal sit down with the entire board or one-on-one type meetings, but either way, that would help. I don't know that the county in my seatmate that is here will correct me if I'm wrong, that we have any legislative priorities that we really want to work on right now. I know we do have some legislative appropriations for airport remodels and things like that that will be pushing our our local legislators for, but I don't know if that's something that you get involved with the legislative appropriation side, or if you just are legislation.
Absolutely. No, I'd be more than happy to help with that. And and you got the right guy. I mean, Representative Dent would be really good on that one. He gets a lot of, you know, a lot of airport stuff pushed through, so definitely worth talking with him.
All right.
Yes, and and the funding stuff, we can start working on that and then, you know, let the budget writers know now
right.
is the time to do it.
All right, let us do some planning and some discussions to make sure we don't leave any of our departments out.
Okay.
We as a board can sit down and and maybe write up our legislative appropriations as a priority list, so they know which ones are our top priority and which one isn't our top priority, if we can only get one or two. And then we'll, we'll do a reach out to you and pass that list along and you can help us either arrange meetings with them or our, say, our Economic Development Director with the Airport Board, who's working that to to get those meetings and and help push. So I think that could help us.
Fantastic. Yeah, just let me know. That sounds like a a great kind of first step here. And the other thing is, once I have that list, you know, once you guys put that together, we can kind of come around and shop it around, you know, and get the, you know, number one might be your priority, but they might say, yeah, number three is actually realistic. Number one's maybe next year. So we can, we can get a realistic view on what that looks like.
Right. That's what I'm thinking too.
Cool.
Yeah, no, I think the cities have their own little legislative appropriations. But the county really has not, since I've been here anyway, hasn't went and and lobbied our representatives for any money. And I think it's about time we changed that. So, yeah.
Good idea. And you can go to them and say, look, we haven't asked for anything in a long time. Let's let's get something done.
Thank you.
Cool.
Outstanding. Of course. Well, hey, I I appreciate it, guys, and and just let me know, call, text, email, when you get that list together. And we'll start shopping it around, you know, we'll, we can go through it and then start talking to see who with the budget writers and see what we can do. Get it in the in the queue right now. The sooner the better.
Right. I will, I will have staff put it on our agenda next week to have the discussions and any of the county functions that are looking for appropriations need to be in here in that meeting, and we'll try to get it hammered out next week for you.
Fantastic. Well, if there's anything you need between now and then, or if you want me to attend, please let me know, and we'll get her done.
Thank you, sir. You're a rock star.
I don't hear that very often. I really appreciate it. I'll do some jazz hands next time.
I always look forward to listening to the updates. I I enjoyed them last year when I was just sitting in, so now, now I get to participate.
Now you get to partake, which is totally different.
Fantastic. Well, I appreciate that very much. We'll, we'll make sure we deliver the the good news in the best way possible this year.
All right. Thank you, Zach.
Have a good day. You too. See ya.
We're all ready for the next legislative session. It seems like the last one just got over. And it's It's like, you know, if they never go back into session, they can't do anything that screws us up. So we just, they need to go on like recess for like six years or so.
I know. Give, take away, give, take away.
Well, or make a law, but for everyone, you may take one away too. So you're not just continuing to.
Okay.
I thought that was that, but I thought it, we were, I want to say we were told by Moshi that ecology was paying for it.
And that's what I remember.
I just, I really think somebody, which would normally be our planning director, should reach out to ecology and say, was there going to be money for this?
But we can watch the meeting minutes from that, too. I think we should.
Or technically, if we signed it, then it may have been the discussion the week before, the the week after, you know, two weeks before.
Yeah, I want to take a look.
And see if there's something on the record there that says.
Because it's my recollection. It was an addition to accept money from ecology. They offered money.
But then where's the ecology contract to give the money? So all right, more research. All right, it's in there. I will try to do some research. We can all do some research and
true.
help poor Ms. Lori Anderson out with what she has to deal with in there. Oh, we have a public comment arrived at nine twenty-six. Who might have been that person that wanted to talk at nine twenty-six this morning? Look at the zoom, let's see if they're on. I do not believe they are on, but their public comments go in regard regard to creating someone that can sign the CIPA documents for the short plots and stuff that we've already addressed this morning. If they're listening, there will be a resolution in our folder for next week that will fix the problem, and we should have somebody be able to sign all those documents that you're looking for, starting Tuesday at about nine thirty in the morning next week. So this problem should be behind us starting next Tuesday, if you're listening, but I will also email her back. Here we are with a, oh, that's the other thing, Pots and Associates, fifteen minutes. Sometimes ten at the most, fifteen. We technically need it on next week's because hopefully we have the meetings with the consulting firms that we might be able to come to a conclusion afterwards. So if that's an afternoon thing for ten minutes or fifteen minutes or something, that will remind us. It's like some of these things, I mean, I'm fine if they're on there every week going forward until we get to an answer. Because it helps us to remember to get our work done to create our answer and not kick the can down the road. So I think we know where we're going. It's just a matter of, with the discussions we've had for today, but we might actually if we hear from both of them, we might decide, okay, we want number A, and let's have staff work up an agreement to get them under contract so that we can do that. In the meantime, we should be getting with the attorney and figuring out the language that needs to be added to allow a consulting firm to do this. And then it would be nice to get that behind us, too. With that, I do not have anything until one thirty for the bid opening. Your first bid opening.
Okay. Yeah. Because it's only me here today.
Do you have a letter opener, or should I?
Pass it down. It's down there. I don't have one.
Oh, I'll give you my inherited gym size work.
The fancy one. That looks dangerous. I don't know if you should give that to me.
You can't have it forever. It's really cool. I actually, it might have been Rex's that I might have stolen. I don't remember which one it was.
Pretty fancy.
Yeah, it beats the one that's over here. Looks like a prison shack more than anything else. So, and then with bid openings, you're looking for company, general location, kind of like Washington or whoever they're from.
And the bond.
Bid bond is present. And then the doctor. I don't even know that I've opened it.
Well, I have one.
Good afternoon.
Oh, lucky there. Good morning, sunshine, or afternoon sunshine.
Yeah, you missed a a great meeting, a beautiful day to take a bunch of federal representatives out underneath the bridge so they could see how scared they are of that bridge.
Which would have been better. You should take a bungee jumping from the bridge.
We don't do illegal things with our federal representatives.
No, but you should have put them in a duly pickup with extended mirrors and drove them back and forth a couple times.
Yeah.
We're told back and forth. Let them have the the steering wheel.
We we've actually put a couple in fruit trucks, which is usually worse than the duly pickup, longer. That really gets them.
I would imagine.
Yeah. What what are we up to? What did I miss?
Uh, we gave away the county. We sold it to Yakima County.
I hope you got a good fair price.
Two bucks. No, we we didn't do anything. We had an update from Zach, legislative update. Status quo. We are going to put it on our agenda next week.
Lori for interim.
To, yeah, to have discussions as a board on whether there's any legislation we want to push, which I tell them I have not heard of any. But then the other thing is potential legislative appropriations like the airport funding. If we can get a list together, county county lists, not city lists that we would like him to work on to try to help get us some legislative appropriations. He also said that he's heard from the legislature legislators that they want to have a sit down with the different commissioners in their district. So we need to reach out to them and see if they want it as, you know, the whole board or as individual. And I don't know that he had heard that from our individual legislators and not just statewide, so it's something to look into. And then we finished off the Lori Anderson stuff, which I think you were here for. Yeah, you were here for that, weren't you?
Um, I missed it when she came in, so I didn't, don't know.
So, yes, we're working on the resolution. There's a draft resolution literally before me right now that makes her the interim director with signature authority for the sole purpose of signing the final milars for short plats by relying adjustments of flood plate permits. Effective until rescinded by us, and then me and Commissioner Zoller discuss what we want to do for big projects. And we're both of the mind that we want to have a consulting firm do the big projects and we can just build a big project for the firm's work. But both of us are of the opinion that we don't want watershed to do it. So Commissioner Zoller has a couple of names that she's going to contact and see if they can do little fifteen minute interviews next week so that we can hear from both of them and and either decide whether we like one of them over the other one or want to continue shopping. And we're also going to reach out to the prosecutor to see what the language would need to be changed in the code to allow an outside consulting firm to be the CIPA representative for those bigger projects. So more to come on that part. And that's about all we've done. Yeah, you're not missing anything else. Now we're stalling until one thirty, so if you have something to stall about, you can.
Did you ask me a question, Commissioner Christopher? I'm sorry, I got a phone call from Eric Johnson with WASAC.
Well, uh, no, I did not. I just said, if you have anything to talk about for the next five minutes, you can.
Did you guys talk about the FSEC reimbursement agreement? I got another email from them yesterday or asking about it.
It's next up after the bid opening, and I haven't talked about it, and I don't know that I plan to. My opinion is Ben mentioned, so I figured it's up to you guys to have discussions, but that is next after the bid open.
Okay.
We have a few people pacing the halls, so there must be some people here for the bid opening. Yeah. They didn't look like politicians, so I guess they were contractors. I like to refer to myself as being furthest thing away, too. Yeah, but if you have something, it's almost like by the time they start the session, they pretty much know for the most part what they're going to push. And they pretty much have the answers to all their questions, and they don't care about hearing from you. They pretty much know where they're going to appropriate all the legislative appropriations. So I do think that might help us if we if we get a list of what appropriations the county would like to see versus the county as in Board of Commissioners, as in individual departments, offices, and or cities or volunteer groups. That maybe we can things like that Centerville road paving that we couldn't get done last year because it got there too late, might actually get done this year if we hit them early enough or something. I don't know that we of the county have called in any favors in the last, since I've been here. So. What year was that? Well, that's my hope. If we can get more organized on this, we won't burn potential funding resources in projects that will never go forward. No, that that's my point. That was not a county. If we as a county come forward with what we want, then that we might get six hundred grand, but it'll be for something we'll actually go through. Whether that's mental health or road or airport or whatever, I don't want to waste an appropriation that gets unused. But we as a county have not asked, we as a county as the Board of Commissioners are the only ones that can say, we as a county have not asked. But need to have our list, so if it doesn't jive with somebody else's ask, that might bring a red flag. But need to have our list. So if it doesn't jive with somebody else's ask, that might bring a red flag. All these hardworking men in here. I used to be one of you and now I'm sitting here. I want to come back. Hire me. All right, it is now one thirty, which is time for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. And today we have a bid opening. Uh, this is a Public Works bid opening for the Bickleton area paving project. And I guess we'll get a staff update if one is necessary. No update necessary. We're just ready for bids and the bids have been delivered. We are starting with which one?
And we have three. The first one is Central Washington Asphalt Incorporated Benton City, Washington. Dangerous tool. One and two. Oh, these are one and two here. I take.
Dendum one and two. So look in there until you find a dendum one and two. Usually have these in a specific.
Yeah, it's this is sheet of seventeen. Okay, receipt dollars of one and two. Yes.
Those are bond. So there you go. And acknowledge in the bid bond is present and the bid amount is.
Included, read the total bid from. Okay, we'll get this down. My first time doing bids. A total bid two million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand and zero cents.
Zero, zero, zero.
Sorry, what was the engineer's estimate? I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, sorry. The engineer's estimate, sir, was two million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Thank you.
I should have said that and I apologize.
And the second one is granite construction.
Remind me again, is this federal project, state project?
One and two are present and. And the total is three million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. And the bond was.
Bond was.
Okay, new pens to come back in there. Thank you. Bear can rock products Yakima Washington. So item number one and two are present. And also the bond is present. And the total is two million, four hundred, eleven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars.
Hey, did you hear all that? This is your Anderson or do you need a recap?
Nope, I heard it. Um, with that, I would make a motion to send the bids back to staff for review and recommendation.
And I'll second.
Perfect. All right. We have a motion and a second to remand these bids back to staff for review and recommendation. Any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you very much for the cheat sheets.
Yeah, that worked. Thank you.
And then for us, I guess they they were close, some of them, one of them. Amazing what it costs to pave a small piece of road these days. I believe that's just the town road too, the one that we've kind of built the base up on this year. I think it's just that section for two point four million, two point six, three point three. That's that's what happens when you when you pave things. Um, alrighty. Next item of business is under unfinished business and is the FSEC reimbursement agreement and I will open the discussion for anybody who wants to have discussion.
My conversation hasn't changed. Uh, we're still in a holding pattern on the application being processed and I really don't want to commit to amounts for work to be done until we know what actually comes out of that application when it's accepted by FSEC or when it's finalized.
So your opinion, just for clarification, is to just continue with the direction to staff. We don't have an answer. We'll let you know when we do.
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, do you have any input on the matter?
Uh, with that being the case and knowing yours, um, I think that the easiest thing to do is to leave this off the agenda until such time that Commissioner Zoller feels that we she would want to move forward with reimbursement.
Um, I would agree with that. So with that, let's drop this hot potato. Um, and hopefully that makes it easier on staff that if FSEC reaches out, just kind of tell them, don't contact us. We'll contact you.
Is Director Hunter still in the room? Have we got an update on where they're coming for any updates on Title Twelve? When are we gonna see that again?
Uh, he's not in the room and I don't have that answer, but it's a very good answer or a very good question. Um, so sometimes he tends to listen to our meetings.
May have been in the hallway.
And maybe he will sneak back in.
Last I remember is you or we'd said that they were gonna look at updating the Title Twelve. And Commissioner Christopher, I believe you'd said that you don't want to move forward with the STR ordinance until the Title Twelve is done. And so people are asking, well, how long until Title Twelve is done? So I just figured I'd bring it up since somebody.
Yeah, and where I kind of roll in with that is I've set conditions on something once here and then got steamrolled. So, um, yeah, I want to make sure the whole package is approved and it isn't backed up on. So yes, I do want to see Title Twelve's uh, conditions in past and um, because same deal, you can't pass a short term rental and say your road needs to be up to Title Twelve standards when currently that means twenty feet wide. Um, that's just gonna cause confusion. It they kind of need to be a package deal when they're passed to not cause confusion. Uh, I do agree that Title Twelve needs to get hurried up. Uh, but the last we heard is they were coming up with a new red line copy and we're going to just attribute that to us. And I think we got that update two or three weeks ago, but we have not seen the red line copy that I know of yet.
And I think he's with his contractors this afternoon. I've watched them go down the hallway. We'll have to react.
So that would be a question and maybe either if you want to forewarn him of that, Mr. Anderson, to give us an update next week so we can be prepared um, for that question. Um, and then the only other thing I can think of that they were working on with that is they were trying to, last I knew, reword the IRE road definition. Um, or standards to make it so there wouldn't be a tax burden shift, but I don't know that they ever accomplish that or not accomplish that because I haven't heard the answer on whether they uh, move forward on that, but we'll find that out when we get the red line.
Okay, just wanted to, you know, this is stuff that's been on our to do list for a long time and it'd be nice to get some things off that long list.
I do not disagree. Next item's at two o'clock, public defender contracts. Now, there's a heck of a gap. Tighten things up. Uh, I did, yes. Did you have a chance to miss on?
What's that?
The clerk asked if we had a chance to look at all the contracts and stuff on the shared grave in relation to the public defender contract negotiations. There's their um, ask in there. It doesn't say what they're asking to do. Onflick attorneys, that that number is not in there, but we do have the contract that the entity has with Skamania County and what Skamania County pays for conflict attorney services uh, is in there. Uh, so that should give us some kind of a ballpark on what they're asking. And hopefully in this discussion today, uh, we'll be able to know what what that number is. What are what are you asking for that? Because that I would have liked to have seen that in a formal written ask, and I think technically it's probably going to need to be before we can move on and accept. Uh, they're gonna have to have a written bid for that service. Uh, but maybe that's what today is, is they're trying to get to some kind of negotiated numbers so they can I don't know. We'll find out. Uh, and then the next question is technically when we hear their information, we can um, go into an executive to discuss the contract. And our interpretation inside and what we want to see out of it and or whatever else at the board. So so chooses. So let me know if you do. And then that was essentially the last thing on our list today. So unless somebody's got some other fun stuff to bring up.
This is a sample of.
Yeah, I have one.
Okay. It's on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little confusing to me because it kind of says that she can sign the mylar's um, for shore plats, by the lines flood plains and to sign as the CIPA responsible official. To me.
There's no limitation.
For what? I don't see a limitation. For, you know, if if you added the words and sign as a CIPA responsible business official for the aforementioned projects, then that to me sets the limits on what you're the CIPA official for. Um, right now, the way this worded to me, she's the CIPA official for everything. Uh, including humongous projects. So I would like a little more definition.
That's the only thing.
Like I said, something for the aforementioned projects or will limit the CIPA responsible officials duties to those three things, but maybe I'm I just see that as a argument for a lawyer someday, so I'm trying to. The issue is, we were trying to get away from the dead time.
Yeah.
That we were having. Now we seem to have a lot of ten minute. Just like I said, stick them little things close together. Give them fifteen minutes unless they need longer. Well, and that's where it makes sense, kind of like you have it. You know, bid opening and then FSEC comment and then another scheduled appointment. So if the first thing runs along, we can move the FSEC thing later. So it's like, you know, Public Works is here and then we got some fill in thing. And then the next thing is a Greg Gallagher is here and then we have some fill in things. So we can always move those fill in things. Uh, if somebody runs longer than a fifteen minute kind of timeframe. We'll get it worked out. I like the flow, yeah. Um, it doesn't give me as much time in the morning to, you know, get stuff done and come in and read the bills and do all that kind of stuff, but it gives me more time in the afternoon to get things done. That's not, you know, this little piece in the morning, this little piece in the afternoon. It's a better block so I can go make the rounds, you might say. I think citizen comment, I think everybody that knows knows, regulars all know now. We might still see people even in the next year that, you know, because it was one o'clock for two decades. Uh, we might have the random person coming on at one o'clock thinking there's comment time and might reach out to you and say, hey, what's up with that? Just explain it to them. Then how often do we have? When is our next Thursday workshop? You have a list. Seems like we're cracking everything out on Tuesdays now, so Thursdays and it's that kind of dead time of the year too. Because I did notice a couple of weeks from now, we have radio and it's usually on the radio day, but it wasn't. So we usually try to always make sure we have a Thursday workshop on the radio day. Going forward anyway, you don't know. Then again, if we don't have anything pressing and no commissioners brought something forward. This needs to be, I need to frame this or something where I can sit up where I can see it.
Mind yours.
Well, I noticed hers over there and I need that one as well. Hers is even better. About facial expressions.
Ah.
Yeah, well, this is one that I inherited from Commissioner Soder. Says never miss a good chance to shut up. Quote from Will Rogers. And he had that on his desk for a long time. Which I just can't see from Commissioner Soder because he's a very good speaker. Commissioner Anderson, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jeff Hunter wants to know if you want to him to come down now to talk about Title Twelve or wait till next week.
If we got time.
If we got time. We have a smidge anyway until they show up at two o'clock, so we can at least get a brief update. They got me paranoid finding that water up here because they're going to someone get so thirsty they drink out of my water container.
I wouldn't.
I need to desanitize it or something. I would hope they wouldn't, but you now have me paranoid over it. I'd have to just take it in my office every week. Yeah, well, I have one for the other room too, but.
Keep your other thing next to it, they won't touch it.
Yeah, right. Don't get a swig of that one, they'll never go for that one again. Yeah, I don't know who it was, somebody was breaking all the tabs off my pens.
Oh, that's weird.
They sit here and play with them and whatnot and then the tab would be missing and it's like, okay, that one goes in a drawer and another one comes out. Everybody's ate my Reese's puff treats. My emergency snack. He's like going to Sugar Rush. Just nothing scheduled because we haven't come up with discussions. That's the other thing I think we're going to find on the Tuesday by lengthening this meeting out. We'll have plenty of times for discussions that don't necessarily call for a Thursday. Unless there's something, we're working on code compliance for two hours or something. Or uh, board policies and procedures that boom, you know, schedule two hours. Hammer it. Uh, so the next meeting serves in seven minutes, so.
Okay, we'll make this fast. First, I wanna, I heard a question came up about what the project we just opened bids for. It's actually five miles, a long line paving on Roosevelt and East Road.
Okay.
And then it's a small piece in town, the main street, that's it.
So five miles plus Main Street was only roughly two and a half million.
Yes.
That's actually not bad.
No, we were actually pleasantly surprised by the price. I know our estimate was lower than that. Um, we were hoping for better prices or we were hoping for better, but it's it, the price of asphalt's gone up. And, uh, you know, with your governor's uh
Yeah.
climate change tax that now affects the cost of our asphalt.
Oil, yeah.
And we did not take that.
Not my governor, sure is your governor.
I'm going with you on that one. Okay.
Not my governor, I didn't go for it.
Neither did I. Um, so as far as Title Twelve, we we incorporated all the comments, we're going one more quick overview and then we will have it to the group, we'll have it to the group next week.
Okay.
To the board next week for year review and then we can schedule another workshop or however you guys want.
Okay.
We know you're gone the week of the thirteenth, I believe, at WAC.
Yeah.
But we'll have it to you next week, not that we plan on doing, having any meetings because you guys need time to digest it.
Yeah, so we could technically, you could drop it off to us next week and then we can schedule time to have board discussion two weeks from then. I don't want to do that gives us time to read through it.
Right, that's what we'll plan. Just tell us when you're available and so be around the end of November.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Sorry to make you run all the way from the annex down the road, but.
Those used to be the good old days.
All right, thank you, sir. Next item of business, we're smidgerly, but we'll manage because I, you guys okay to go four minutes early? All right, good to go. Uh, is public defender contract negotiations. We have Chris Lance and Lori Hocker will be coming up. The honorable Chris Lance and the honorable Lori Hocker.
I did not know we got promoted.
Well, you never know, things can happen. But not until you find your replacements.
We're not going anywhere.
Got to get a few, we got to start training.
Okay, so we will start with, um, the board has received your um quote, your bid.
Okay.
Um, the one thing we at least I had a question about is that you've added in there for um conflict attorney uh to be the conflict attorney finder getter facilitator, whatever word you want to use for that, but I didn't see a a price in there. I do find a Skamania County contract and and see what you receive over there, but I didn't know if you wanted to open with a number for for that one over there or for ours.
I think what we were talking about, and it's more than just a contract, I think there's, so we we wanted to talk about that and what goes into that. Um, but what we were um gonna offer on that is five hundred on each of us. It's quite a bit larger here and there's a lot more work that has to be done.
Five hundred per month.
For each of us, and that is not the defender rate, that's basically at our rates for two hours a month, um putting in some time. Because that position, um you either go with the contract administrator or you go with an office of public defense. Office of public defense means you're going to build a structure and fund it just like your prosecutor's office, which is going to be million, I mean, it's going to be in Carpentier County, not feasible. But you need, we are your department. So that has been moved from the judges now to the commissioners. So the public defense, we are in essence, one of your departments, like planning and those things. And under that, um, those things like recruiting new attorneys, training new attorneys, bringing new attorneys in, offering trainees, monitoring these contracts, um that's things that as the um, not the office of public defense, but the head of the felony portion of that, that we feel is appropriate to be housed in that as your employees when you hire us so that, you know, meeting with us and talking with us and saying, okay, how's it going? Can we find some more? Is there an event that we need to do? How do we attract, draw them? Because we need to be thinking, how do we get more here? But that um puts us more, we're already your employees as the public defense contract because it put us all under you. When the Superior Court judges no longer do that function because they in their infinite wisdom, the people, the Superior Court or the Supreme Court decided that it was better housed with the commissioners. So then they gave them the two options, the administrators or the office of public defense. In small counties, that's not a feasible thing. So the other option is this um contract administrators that do it, most of the counties that are small, they have their um felony prosecutors do that, that they contract with.
They felony defend.
I was gonna say, you confused me there. I'm I'm thinking that might have broke the law.
No, 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 because it's entirely inappropriate for prosecution on this, I think, to have any any say at all, it's very clear that they.
Any say or any opinion.
Entirely inappropriate for them to have any sway or anything on that. And like they are their own elected office, we come under your elected office. Um, and so that, how we do that, how we manage that, um, I think is important. And just like it's not efficient for, when we say it's not appropriate for the prosecutor to control the office, but also in the prosecutor's office, you couldn't hire the prosecutor every single year and expect to have a functional office. So a contract with every year where we're renewing this and trying to figure out what's going on doesn't work. We need one that's a little bit longer where we also are invested in recruiting, finding new people, training them. When I came in and I was young, there were ten or fifteen attorneys, I sat with them, that's how I got my qualifications to do the felonies, doing the things that you need to do, you need that training. There's nobody left. There is me here and there is Chris on the West End. And so there's nobody to train, um, and there's nobody left to train if something were to happen in one of us leave. So I think those are really important things that as your department in essence, we're not saying, you know, staff a whole one, but we have office staff and things that it needs to be looked at and we need to look at creating more opportunities and find out what we need to do to get more attorneys here and have that so it's, there's longevity and there's people to step up to do.
But just one thing to clarify there, when Lori's using the term employees, it's not as if you're hiring us to then also pay our benefits and things like that, it's more contract or contract.
Contract employee, right.
Still un- encompassed under you guys, are under the commissioners.
Right. I guess my worry is you guys think you're gonna find, have any more success finding a conflict attorney than the judges did or that we've tried? I I mean, you have more relationships, I would say, that you could put to use. I would say that you have more trust built up with each of them that you can find out why they won't. Uh, and potentially help us fix the problems. Uh, but I do worry that you're gonna run into the same boat we're in.
Well, and I think some of that too, with us, we, when you guys are reaching out, it's like commissioners, that's your job, you know what you're doing. We know the people that are qualified and coming in and they also want to know that there's someone that they can rely on. So if they're gonna come in, they're gonna want to use my office, they're gonna want to use his office if they're coming from far away. Um, can we help facilitate stepping in for hearings? Can we do things to make it easier for them to come here? And help us. So there's, I think there are things that we can do, um. And I do think we're in a much better position to do that than other entities where they're not talking to other attorneys because then they they talk to us and they want to know what's it like here, what are the rules, what are the forms? They just don't know anything.
It it's not unlike, you know, when you get a cold call at home. You know, I'm with ABC Roofing, you know, give us a try. Well, I don't know you ABC Roofing, but if it's Lori or I calling, we can, just like Lori said, we can kind of talk them through it. And if it's like, oh, if if they are there, then maybe going ahead and taking a case and taking that conflict may be something they're willing to do as opposed to, you know, taking a call from somebody they're not familiar with and certainly not having the same experience of appearing in that courtroom as we do.
Right. Um, okay, um, other, Mr. Zoller, Commissioner Anderson is online. Um, questions or anything?
Can you talk to us a little about the Blake cases? I remember last year when we went into negotiations, you guys said that you were gonna have a lot more workload on your plates with the Blake cases. Can you talk us through that and how that's worked out this last year?
You can, well, they've changed.
Right, it basically the 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 manner in which those cases are being assigned, so to speak, if somebody does not have retained counsel, it's the Washington, it's the the State Office of Public Defense that have been basically stepped in and representing those indigent defendants. So it's something that's basically taken, we did not anticipate that, it was not something that anybody from OPD called this up and said, hey, you know, what's your take on it?
And I still handled quite a few of them. Um, I did them more on a pro bono basis just because Mary Jo was trying to facilitate, so I um actually, and then there was some funding for that. I consider it, you know, we did it under the contract, so I did a few of those and facilitated people and helped them with theirs. Um, and we didn't do any extra billing on that. The thing that we have now on that's new um are the no contact order violations and civil cases that can be a little bit nasty and quite lengthy. Um, and I have one of those going on now. Um, those are the new types of cases under the rule that we're starting to get, so. Uh, and a lot of times the um where you hear about divorces being nasty, the uh, no contact orders and a lot of those cases are the kind of side of the divorce of the people that don't want to get a divorce attorney now are saying, oh, well, I'll just do a no contact order. And then you get free counsel. Um, so if you qualify, we're got, so that's kind of backdooring me and and those are ones that do take quite a bit of time. And that are on our plate and for me who has not done since I started this, the civil part and the divorce that don't do any of those, so it's relearning those and and picking them back up because we're doing, we also are seeing, uh, I think more, um, our juveniles are picking up as far as our ARYs and our truancies, our at-risk youth. Um, a lot of those that kind of dwindled during COVID and now we're getting back into the families, we're seeing things, so our filings on those I think are getting um much higher. I know I'm seeing um um monthly, we're seeing quite a bit of those and what we talked about before is you don't always see those in a year because I might have them for four or five years. We've got some places that we're closing out, I think I'll be closing out one that's like two hundred, oh, two hundred plus hours on a case. So you're seeing those, the mental health ones that we had talked about. Um, and kids and things like that. The Blake, where that's going away, it's was actually a nice, much nicer alternative to these civil ones that we're picking up on now because they're part of that that we have to cover as well.
And potentially landlord tenant uh cases where a tenant is not, is indigent. No surprise in that they cannot pay their rent and most likely that's why they're being evicted. Um, I've not been appointed to any of those as yet, but I know that's something that they can ask for quarter point of counsel.
I was gonna ask you because that started like a year ago.
Right.
And I was wondering how many of those we were gonna get locally, so I'm very happy to hear you.
They've been doing the the um, Washington State has, the bar has been providing some counsel through the CLEAR program.
It's like some arbitrator or something.
Which is a good thing because if you get too many of those, then they're going to be limiting us out and we're gonna be, I mean, if you get too quickly, then we're gonna be.
Yeah, our case numbers would.
Yeah, it would be impossible to keep up with that. These other ones I think are going to be, start being more and more uh common with the protection orders. And they just get kind of messy in filings and I don't think our court has really thought about how we walk through those because it's process service and a whole bunch of things. It's basically a divorce case in a little package for these domestic cases. So it's a new one that we're doing, but we'll just see how it goes because we haven't done it before.
So so with your your numbers, say you have something that lasts four years and the way that you guys provide your your numbers to us, when that case is closed, you count all all of those uh hours on that month um for that closed case, correct? And so you've been our our um certainly you've been been our attorneys for multiple years, so you know, with enough cases, all that should be equalized out, so every month is or over the course of a year, it's going to equalize itself out.
No, not necessarily. So some cases that we've had, I've had since I started that are just going off now, some are four and six years, and I know you have are coming from a position where you have a really close personal relationship with the prosecutor and kind of his influence on that, but that's not uh, those cases, that's not accurate to say that it'll be the same every year. So some we hold, I got from Jerry Matasich when he dumped tons of files. And those cases I still have. Some of them we're still working through, one that I just got rid of, I had since I came on. And it's a gentleman that probably takes up four hours a week in my office. So four hours a week from the time I started to now. And we just came off. Um, so no, they don't work out where every month is the same, every year is the same. Um, that is absolutely not correct.
And then you also mentioned the truancy, it is, you're you're counting the truancy under the juveniles, but doesn't the truancy get paid through a different program?
Not at all. So the truencies is you guys contract with me. With Chris and I, I take the majority of those, so your, the commissioners pay for all. With Chris and I, I take the majority of those, so your, the commissioners pay for all truencies, all ARYs, all chins. Yes, so when there's children at risk, when there's, um, so at-risk youth. There's some different, um, cases that can come in, they're all under the contract. When we represent in a dependency case, when the child has to be represented, those all come under this contract. So all of those are entirely under this contract.
Where those, where those funds come from within, in the county, I'm not, I don't know where those originate.
I don't know if there's extra funding for those, but those are this contract.
Right, we get paid for our juvenile representation, just the same as we do for the adult representation.
Got it, Mr. Anderson?
Um, I'm just trying to work out, I'm looking, i- in granted, you guys give us different. Um, months from what we're, what we have in access to, but it looks like Lori, you're doing pretty much all the juvenile work.
I have been doing quite a bit of that, yes.
A- and you also do pretty much on average, pretty close to the same amount of, um. Uh, adult work in terms of hours, um, just what we can see on, on the actual document. And so, how, how does that work out? Cuz I'm just looking at it, you know, from strictly budgetary provisions. Price per hour and Chris is, you know, from what we can see is running somewhere around three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. You're down at like a hundred and fifty cuz you're taking all the juvenile cases. Um, how does that work out between the two of you when, you know, for us, it's, it's a flat fee contract?
Well, that's something between the two of us. Initially, when we came in, we, um. He took more of the class A felonies cuz I had one. And that was a couple of years ago when I wasn't fully qualified when I took on this, and so I did more of the juveniles. And I had some catch up to do because like we had told you, there's, you have to do a certain number of trials and things like that. And so how we divide it, that, that's really up to us, how we do that.
I would agree.
Um, but that, that is, that's accurately reflecting it, but those are entirely under this.
Yeah, I, I would have to, um.
And also, sorry to interrupt you, but one other thing, for a long time too, we didn't adjust that because during COVID. Um, we didn't have the number of juveniles, so the ARYs and the truencies and the chins, and those are things that a lot of them come out of the schools. So we didn't have that huge number of them, and so we just took them on and, and, but again, that's something that Chris and I deal with between the two of us.
Right, I guess where I'm coming from is how you guys wanna handle your partnership, if you wanna call it that. Um, I don't feel as up for me to interrogate or change or whatever, I either accept. Um, the deal and negotiate a deal that I think is fair for our constituents or I don't. Um, I, I would hope that the board would not try to. Divide, um, or alienate one partner away from the other partner, uh, based on workload or. Dollar amount or whatever we're getting at.
I, I think all I'm trying to do is understand the contract that we have. I mean, most contracts that I would see like this would be per hour for every hour worked and, and you would see that on a monthly basis on. Pretty much every other contract that we run through the county, and so I'm trying to understand. How this contract was formed in the beginning so that I understand how it's working now as cases change and everything else on top of. Putting, um, this additional potential thousand dollars per month on top of it. Um, and is that something that can just be worked into the contract, um, and, and does. Does each of these partners need the five hundred dollars or is the two hours of conflict, um. Something that we can, we can, kinda like what we did last year with the Blake cases, it was. This is potentially an additional workload, we don't know if it's how much of an additional workload it's gonna be. Um, but, but that, that has, that has costs that, that comes to our budget that, you know, I'm sure you've heard how constrained our budget is. Uh, moving forward, and so of course, I, all I want is, is the best service for the constituents at the, the most reasonable. Rates so that we can continue providing the services that this, that, um, the people need. Um, and so, no, I'm absolutely not trying to divide anyone, I'm trying to understand. Um, and make sure that, that the county is situating itself as best as possible to move forward. Um, and with regards to the conflict attorneys, you know, we give you, we give a base rate, um, per hour. Um, or, or not a base rate per hour, we give a sum rate per hour to provide these services and then, um. Uh, which we're paying you guys to do, if you have a conflict, we have to bring someone else in. And then we have to pay them as well for the same thing we're paying you for. If it was strictly a per hour rate like we do at the misdemeanor levels. Um, if you're, if you have a con- conflict, you're not getting paid for it, as well as us paying someone else for it, whenever there's a conflict attorney involved. From the taxpayer's perspective, it's we're paying twice for that same work. And so I'm just trying to understand how, how we can get through this.
And I, I would say that's not accurate, you used to be paying for three full-time attorneys, now you're paying for two plus the conflicts. Um, and we, the administrators, we brought this up last time and we were told. We don't want you to have anything to do with it, we got this, it's good, um, it's not working and right now, um, they're getting ready to release. Um, a criminal because there's no attorney for him, so I, I think there's breakdowns in the system and it's not working. That's why we're offering to step up and do this, um.
And I would say, sorry to interrupt you, but I would say that from Commissioner Anderson's perspective, I can see where he could. Think that if we're paying you this dollar amount and you're not doing a case, we should be able to recoup that dollar amount, so you should pay that lawyer. And if we paid you on an hourly basis and you weren't providing those hours, I can understand that logic. But we're not paying you on an hourly basis, we're paying you on a salary basis. Um, and to try to recoup some of that salary. Uh, based on each individual case, I, I don't find, uh, ethically prudent. Um, now what, as we go forward with the contract. Conflict attorneys, part of me does think, you know, what if we only paid you per, by hour for the hours. That you actually worked on finding a conflict attorney. But then with what your, your opening statement was, it's so much more than that. That, that how do we even get into that, or do we just have you try to make cold calls? For conflict attorneys where we're paying you an hourly rate for that, but then we're not getting the recruiting in the office space and the. The whatnot that goes along with it, so my whole question, you already answered, so.
And also, tho- those reports, going over those reports, helping you to understand these things, just like Mr. Anderson, clearly, I think by some of his. Questions shows that he doesn't understand what these reports say, he doesn't understand what type of cases. And like I said, I think previously, his close friend Dave Canal has been, um. Advising him a lot on what these things are, and I don't think he understands. As us working for the commissioners, I think our job is to explain that to you and that's part of it. It takes time, looking at these contracts, having us explain to you what they all mean. What all of these types of cases are that we're doing. Um, understanding what the qualifications are for each of those, when you're looking at, is each attorney in compliance with these things? There's a lot that goes into that, and I think as that administrative, whoever your administrator is, it's. Their job to make sure as your department, you understand fully what all of those things are. So that you clearly understand, okay, these are who we need, these are the things that, um, go into it, these are the attorneys that we need. Um, but you need someone in those positions that understands it to explain it to you and. Provide that information to you, so you're not thinking, oh, there's another contract that pays all those juvenile things, why, why are we including those? Um, and just like all your other departments where there's so much that you need to know, you guys can't know anything, but you. Rely on your department heads to give you that information so that you have a really good understanding of what's going on. And that's what we're offering to provide, um, and then hopefully we can get ourselves into a better position.
You, uh, Ms. Zoller, you haven't spoken yet, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I really appreciate the way you've explained it, because I think there's a lot of things that are in that bucket that we haven't even addressed. And I think it probably just terrified staff that said, contracts, wait a minute, I do. Uh, there were things that we weren't even aware of or looking at that could have become a really big problem in short order. So I'm thankful that you've came in and explained it in this way of what else is in there that we should have been taking care of and now we can't take care of it possibly.
And, and that's, that would be our job is, you know, bring us in, ask us and we can go through those and explain them to you so that you. You know, then maybe you might get in a point where staff is comfortable, but just getting that set up in a good spot and understanding what it goes into it.
It won't be your problem anymore.
Well, and it's too much for, it's too much for staff, yes.
They, they have a big job.
Yeah, right, I, yeah. Uh, the only thing that I don't know, because I'm not an attorney and I try to stay out of courtrooms. Um, that might be a sticky wicket is we have your official bid. Um, for everything other than the conflict attorney and we might need an official bid. For the conflict part of it, to make sure that we're not, um, causing rifts. Um, elsewhere, so, um, I mean, we, we as a board need to, uh, talk. Um, when we're done talking today and, and decide where we wanna go from there, but I would, uh, I would definitely, while I'm remembering. Say, yeah, write a written or something.
And we'll have that in by the end of the week because I'm gone next week.
But, yeah.
I, I don't have any further questions that I can think of, do either of my teammates have further questions that they can think of?
And we are available anytime if you wanna call us with any questions or anything.
But we appreciate your time here this afternoon.
Okay, thank you both, and thank you for being available, you're always available when I call you anyway. Mining your phone tag for twenty phone calls back and forth.
Yeah, but it, it got done.
It got done. Neither one of us gave up, so it worked.
There you go, alright, everybody have a good afternoon.
Thank you both.
My last question is, is if we were to, to agree to this thousand dollars per month, are they gonna be able to find a conflict attorney? Or do they feel confident that they can find a conflict attorney so that this person doesn't get released? Because I believe our staff has done everything possible to try to find someone.
In the short.
Well, this contract isn't gonna renew it, so it, at your.
The contract will be for next year.
Yes.
They wouldn't even start looking until January first and we don't even know if the inmate or whoever the, the person charged will even be in custody at that time.
I guess, I guess the issue that I'm seeing though is, is that this is, this isn't an issue just here, everyone throughout the state's having the same issue of. Trying to find conflict attorneys and find enough attorneys in, um. We're, we're adding cost to the county and, and are we going to be able to see? And make sure that we don't release people, you know, because we can't.
Right, and I've been on record in this room multiple times that I don't know that us, if we so chose to. Uh, pay these fine individuals for providing the service, if they would even be able to provide the. Uh, find a conflict attorney because it's one of those you get what you pay for. And if you're trying to get somebody to come here from Vancouver, Yakima or farther. To do a conflict and here, well, what are they offering? Oh, we're offering a Big Mac and a file of fish. Um, sorry, not enough, you need to throw in some French fries with that. Uh, we might find ourselves in the same predicament that I've been trying to teach this board for a year and you might be underpaying your attorneys.
Well, and we.
Which this board has chosen to find out and know that it is underpaying its attorneys. Hence the reason it raised all the attorney prices or all the attorney wages in the prosecutor's office, just not elsewhere.
Just the skills and the professionalism and the connections, we owe that to the constituents. They don't need criminals released and we don't need this burden on our staff.
And we are seeing that the Office of Public Defense throughout the state, if you look at their negotiations, they're not doing. Annual negotiations, they're doing compensation, they're looking at things like your prosecution. At, you look at a scale, it's not prosecutions up here and gets two million and the defense gets nothing. It's supposed to be equal, so when you look at us, we're not doing benefits, we're not doing vacation, we're not doing all of these things that go into it. Um, and so we're trying to cut costs and save things, so there's a lot of cost saving that you have by contracting your attorneys. That your full-time employees are a huge cost, but some of the things that we can offer when we talk to different attorneys. Are the relationship of saying, you can use our office if you need to get into a Zoom call, which is very difficult here, if you need the forms. Knowing that you have an ally there and some people that you can work with, not just a hostile, aggressive environment where people are going to cuss and yell at you. That makes it more apt to come work with those people.
Right, yeah, and I would say you guys are true. Um, contract employees, because I don't have to pay for your trainings. Um, I don't have to pay for your car or your mileage or your, that's a whole other department.
Or health insurance.
But we have employees that we pay, so that's why we're looking at the cost and things like that.
We will, we will let you go and, uh, we will have a chat and we'll see where we go from there. And please submit a written and, um, perfect, and thank you both for everything you do for the county.
Thank you to all three of you, as well as staff.
Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Um, and again, we can do executives today to have, uh, debate amongst ourselves. On what we wanna do going forward or a counter offer or whatever we wanna do on this contract. Um, if there isn't any, um, other unfinished business or board pending that we wanna discuss at the time. No?
I don't have any, uh, board pending for today.
Okay, um, alright, so let's, uh, let's pop back into executive. And discuss what we wanna do with this.
Do you wanna mention that we won't be conducting any further business and that Zoom will be shutting down?
Um, I wasn't going to, but other than the Zoom was gonna be shutting down. Um. Because I don't like to handcuff myself. Um, and say we won't be conducting any further business, cuz I don't know if. Necessarily we schedule a fifteen-minute executive with no plans to conduct any official business. But fifteen minutes from now, Rob or some staff member doesn't come in and say, oh my God, it's an emergency, we need to do this. And yet, I've already told the public that I wasn't going to, so I like to leave myself the ability to have an emergency option. So I will say I have no plans to conduct any, uh, business or take any votes outside of this. Um, but I don't wanna guarantee it. So with that, I will say the board is gonna go into executive session in accordance with RCW forty-two dot three zero. Dot one one zero, print one, print D, to review negotiations of the performance of a publicly bid contract. When public knowledge retaining such consideration would likely cause an increased cost. Um, I don't know how much time you need, ten minutes, is that, or do you think fifteen?
Ten's fine to start for me.
What do you say? Ten's fine to start for him, I think it's, but so, okay, um.
You guys will be calling me?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
No, cuz I don't wanna do as, uh, executive and accidentally be hot mic'd and then I'm against the law and. I go to prison and they can defend you, but only if I pay them, then there's conflict and then they need a conflict attorney in. Yes, we are.